Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you all to our special city council meeting of July 18, 2023. In the interest of government transparency with regards to the deliberations and decisions made by the city council and according to open meeting law, since this meeting was posted as a Zoom meeting, this meeting is recorded by video and audio and will be conducted by remote participation. Additionally, all votes taken by the city council during this and future remote meetings will be by roll call vote. If you're calling it on a phone, you can press star nine to request to speak. If you're watching on a computer or device, there is a raised hand button that you can tap or press to request to speak. Please use either of these options during oral communications to be recognized to speak. It's a finding in the City of Gloucester that no individual should be denied equal treatment or opportunity because of their age, ancestry, color, disability, including intellectual and developmental mental disability, family status, immigration status, gender identity or expression, military status, marital status, national origin, race, religion, sex or sexual orientation. I'd like to begin by announcing the names of the city councillors that are on the call. First of all, I'm Val Gilman. I'm Ward four city councillor and I'm also the council president. Scott Memmard, Ward one city councillor, Jason Grow, at-large city councillor, Jeff Worthley, at-large city councillor, Tony Gross, at-large city councillor, who's trying to get his video on, Council O'Hara, at-large, Tracy O'Neill, who is our Ward two city councillor, and Frank Margiotta is going to try to attend, but he has a conflicting meeting tonight. So there were eight of us here on the call, and I'd also like to introduce Joanne Sinos. And let me see if there are any attendees that I should introduce. We have Kathy Clancy, who is the chair of the school committee on the call. As an attendee, we have Suzanne Egan, our general counsel, and we have Bob Ryan. We have, I think that's all. So we have a total of 15 attendees. So, Madam Clerk, first order of business.
First order of business is for council vote. City Charter 2-11C, O'Neill, Public Hearing 2023-035 to amend Gloucester Code of Ordinances, Chapter 22, Traffic in Motor Vehicles, Section 22-265, Turning Movements Generally by Adding Webster Street at its intersection with Eastern Avenue Traffic Shall Use the Dedicated Turning Lanes, and this is for council discussion and vote. And this was continued from the July 11, 2023 city council meeting.
Okay, and I should take note that I have not seen Councillor Nolan. Is anybody? He's on?
Yeah, his name, yeah, he's here.
Okay, awesome, great. Sean Nolan, our vice-chair and Ward five city councillor, thank you. So I'd like to tee up our discussion tonight. So before we begin, I'd like to just note that our advertisement for the July 11, 2023 public hearing was duly posted in the Gloucester Daily Times. It was posted on June 30, 2023, and it satisfied the seven-day posting requirements for the Gloucester Code of Ordinances as defined in our city charter. It's in your packet for tonight's meeting. At the July 11, 2023 city council meeting, after the public hearing was officially closed, the committee report of July 10, 2023 was made by ONA Chair, Councillor Nolan. After brief discussion, Councillor O'Neill invoked the city charter 211C in regard to public hearing 2023-035. As stated by our city clerk on her July 12, 2023 email, "Tonight's special remote meeting is a one-item agenda. The public hearing was closed and no new information will be submitted for this matter. The meeting will begin with the committee report, followed by council discussion and vote." So, Councillor Nolan, at this point in time, if you would deliver your committee report from your July 10, 2023 ONA meeting, that would be great.
Point of order from Councillor O'Hara.
State your point of order on a procedural matter, Councillor O'Hara.
Yes, I believe that we have a number of open meeting violations that have taken place since the 211C was invoked by Councillor O'Neill. And open meeting violations, I believe, were in the form of emails. New information was provided, and also a councillor noted a concern. And I believe that those are two open meeting violations that, again, I'm just noting this, and I don't know how we proceed with those being known.
Thank you, Councillor O'Hara. I would suggest that you file a complaint, a formal complaint, and the Clerk's office can help you with that. So, Councillor Nolan, if you would move forward with your standing committee report, that would be great.
A motion by, oh. Excuse me?
Go ahead.
On a motion by Councillor O'Hara, second by Councillor Majota, the ordinance administration committee voted by roll call, three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend the city council amend the Gloucester Code of Ordinances 22, Chapter 22, sorry, Traffic in Motor Vehicles, Article 6, Traffic Schedules, Section 22, 265, Turning Movements Generally by Adding the following, Webster Street at its intersection with Eastern Avenue, traffic shall be, shall use the dedicated turning lanes. Nice move.
Second.
Motions made by Councillor Nolan, seconded by Councillor O'Hara. So I'd like to, Councillor Nolan, on the narrative, that would be great.
The narrative is pretty simple. We're trying to help the export of vehicles from Webster Street where the turn radius is going on to Webster Street from Eastern Avenue and out to relieve the traffic congestion that the school will create in the area, but this would help to alleviate it. And that's the basic guidelines of this. We're just trying to help people to exit safely, right or left, onto Eastern Avenue from Webster Street.
Okay, thank you. So I'd like to suggest that we will keep our discussion to two minutes each, and if we have to do a second round, we can, we can, we can agree to do that. So, Madam Clerk, would you mind just timing that so we can make sure that we, we all share the floor with each other? And so who would like to go first? Councillor O'Neill?
Thank you. I might as well go first. I invoked the 211C. I pass that school multiple times a day. I don't think a third lane is going to help with the congestion, as Webster Street is wide at its intersection with Eastern Ave, but it narrows immediately. That's the first thing. I don't think the sightline in that third lane, trying to look around or see past an oncoming bus or tractor-trailer truck coming down Eastern Ave, is a safe thing. I think it would be safer to keep the one lane exiting Webster Street and one lane entering Webster Street. That way, people have to wait and make sure that the sightline is clear. Another thing I did notice is the sidewalks. I'm not sure if they're ADA compliant. Yes, they have the, they have the little cutouts, but I'm not sure they're five feet wide. So if, if the sidewalks have to be made ADA compliant or five feet wide, that would narrow that intersection significantly. I just don't think it's a safe thing. And that's where I stand. Thank you.
Thank you. Who else would like to speak on this matter? Councillor Worthley?
Thank you. So firstly, I appreciate Councillor O'Neill's input. She lives in the neighbourhood, and I think that there's a lot of value in getting input from someone who lives in the area. I did my own site visit there. The street at that intersection is about 46 and a half feet wide, at least when I measured it. There's no parking on the right side of Webster. I think that was a change that was made recently on the, as you get closer to Eastern Ave. And when I stood there watching, I observed something. The cars coming down Webster, if they're turning right, they hugged the curb and went towards the right side. And the ones that were going to the left stayed right in the middle and waited and turned left. There was discussion at the last meeting about whether or not a bus can make that right-hand turn from Eastern Ave onto Webster. The line isn't moving. This, this is not adding three lanes. We're, we're making a right-hand turn lane. The center line, when I looked at the plans, is not moving one inch, not a centimeter. So if the buses couldn't make the turn before, they can't now. If they could make the turn before, they can now. That doesn't change. I think the point, if you're taking a right-hand turn coming out of Webster, and you're looking to the left, and there's a car that pulls up on your left, yeah, that's going to make that a little harder to see. I don't disagree. And the second they pull out to turn left, not only are they blocking your view, but they're going to block traffic. So, you know, we see that in every other intersection. See, if someone turns left, you can take a right without even having to look to the left any longer, because they're blocking the oncoming traffic. So I think that sometimes we have a tendency, all of us do it, where we have feelings about one decision, and it oozes into the next decision, right? There's some people who are upset about the override. There's some people upset about the choice of the location of the school. Some people are disappointed in the loss of the field, the loss of the dedicated memorial to Private Joseph Meadows. All those things are legitimate. But what's before us today is painting an arrow on the road, left or right, and that's it. Now, will this, when school opens, will it be more congested this year than last year and the year before that?
Councillor Worthley, Councillor, our city clerk raised her hand about 10 seconds ago, and I just want to give you a warning that if you could wrap up, that would be great.
Thanks. So I don't think I can make that last point in a second, so.
Okay, we can do another round if we need to. And Councillor Grow has your, your hand raised.
I'm going to, I'm going to pick up where Jeff left off, because he hit on exactly the points that I was going to make. And looking just very quickly at map geo and doing some measurements on there, the street at Webster and Eastern is approximately 40, 46 to 48 feet. There's, there's more than enough room for, actually, there's more than enough room for four 10-foot wide lanes at that point. But his point is, is that effectively that intersection is doing what it's doing, what we're asking it to do now anyway. All we're doing by this vote is literally doing, as he said, painting some arrows on the road. And yes, it's going to be more congested. Yes, there will be a period of time where people get adjusted to the flow of trip, excuse me, the flow of traffic. When, when, when the increase in parents picking up or dropping off happens, people will begin to adjust their routines to that. If we paint these arrows on the road, and, and it turns out that it doesn't work, that it doesn't facilitate the turnings and the congestion, we can undo this, and we can cover up those arrows, and it'll go back the way it was, which is essentially, as Jeff pointed out, cars hugging the right to go right, and cars hugging the left to go left, and literally nothing will change. So I think that by, by codifying this, putting the arrows on the road, making it clear what people are expected to do and when, we're actually adding to the safety of the intersection, not detracting from it. And if I, I, you know, I will, of course, be upset if I am wrong, but I think that this is something that is, is a fairly straightforward thing to do. And I don't think we're going to find ourselves in trouble by doing it. I mean, we're literally talking about two arrows on the, on the pavement. So I support this moving forward, and I think Jeff hit a lot of the points right on the money.
Thank you. Councillor Memmard?
I would like just to follow up on Councillor O'Neill and Councillor Worthley and Councillor Grow. I too made a site visit this afternoon and measured the street and looked at it from here and from there, and both ways. The one thing I think we need to remind ourselves of is the traffic study that was done three years ago as part of the school's preparation for this. We have the school's request before us and proposal supported by the Mayor's Office. Importantly, although the new school will have more traffic, most all of the traffic will be off of Webster Street. And so because of the new parking and off-street provisions for buses and parents and staff, I anticipate that Webster Street will see a significant drop in general congestion. And I think that the Webster Street intersection with Eastern Avenue is a tricky one. I'm mostly concerned about the tractor-trailer truck traffic on that road and adequate signage controlling that. That's a separate issue from what we're talking about tonight. And I brought that to the administrations and the school committee's attention at the request of constituents in the neighborhood. But as Jason said, as Councillor Grow said, I think we're providing some clarity to what is an existing pattern that people will follow. And I think the new marking on the road, as requested, will help. And if it doesn't, we'll have a chance to review it, study it, and change it if necessary. But I think it's, it's been requested of us. It's been endorsed by the school committee and the school building committee and the Mayor's Office. And I'm very comfortable proceeding with their request and putting this in place as we get ready for the school season to begin at the new Webster Street, these veterans' school.
Thank you. Has anyone so far not spoken at least once on this matter? Councillor O'Hara?
Thank you. I, as I said in, in subcommittee, I am concerned. I don't know what the options are. The, the addition of, of the letter written by Dane of PMS Manufacturing noted the trailer truck traffic. And, you know, I am concerned with buses taking a right-hand turn onto Webster Street. But a trailer truck with a tractor and a 53-foot box, that driver will need every bit of pavement to make that right-hand turn from, from the 128 onto Webster Street, going not only into one lane, but now two lanes. So that, that, that driver approaching Webster Street from 128 is going to more than likely turn on their blinker. And now, instead of one, one car, it's two cars that need to move out. I, I just, I have concerns over that. I don't know what the options are. Obviously, we're introducing a doubling the traffic as far as cars coming out of the new school through teachers and parents. So I am concerned with, with the two lanes. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that hasn't spoken at least once on this? I don't see, Tony, do you have your hand up? Because I don't see your face yet. Okay, so I will speak to this, and then we can go and have one more round. So I'm going to be supporting this for several reasons. First of all, the superintendent was very clear that this is the beginning of a process. And he was clear both in subcommittee and also at our meeting on the 11th. And he's been clear that if this needs to be modified, that it will be done. And that's the benefit of having a site-based council, a PTO, a school administration, and the school building committee that will continue to keep a close eye on this, working closely with city administration. So I'm confident in that, number one. Number two, I've, I've read the traffic report, the 193-page engineering report in its totality back when it first came out. I've reread it again a couple of times. Pages six of the traffic report in 39 very specifically refers to these turning lanes. So there's a history of this being vetted. I was also at the meeting on, in March of 2020, when this was first presented. And the animated report that they showed did not include the exit onto Eastern Ave. It was more just of, on the property itself. But I do want to just speak very briefly about the bus. The buses in its old place at Veterans Memorial School would actually park head-in to the right side of the school and then have to back out onto Webster Street. The buses now are going to be flowing out around a cul-de-sac and then out in a file, in a, out to Eastern Ave. And that in itself is a process improvement for any bus driver that felt it was a little bit scary to have to back out onto Webster. I also will tell you, and I'm trying to be quick, because I know my two minutes is already up, but in my days at Plum Coast School, when my son was, was taking the bus, and sometimes we would drive him in, the, the buses and the connection between drivers is usually very strong. And they usually watch to see when they need to round. That happens at O'Malley. It happens at the high school, any school with the buses. So thank you, Councillor Nolan. So you would, you would keep in track of my time, not, not Madam Clerk. So that, that will end my first round. So who would like to speak for a second time? And let's see if we can keep this to a minute. Councillor Grow?
So. I think Tracy had her hand up before I did, actually.
Okay, go ahead. Councillor O'Neill?
Okay, thank you, Councillor Grow. As, in contrast to what you said, Councillor Grow, and to what everybody else is saying, I know I'm the odd man out, but that's okay. If what you said is true, and I believe it is, because I drive that road every day, people are making their own middle lane and taking a left, and people are taking a right, and people are coming in off of Eastern Avenue. So I think it's flow, it will flow more naturally without painted lines. So as opposed to putting the lines in and then taking them out, as you said, we can, why don't we not put them in and see how the flow goes? And if it's needed, put the lines in. It seems to me that traffic is flowing the way we want it to. Why mess with it?
Thank you, Councillor O'Neill. Councillor Grow?
Well, very quickly, I wasn't going to address that, but I will answer the question. I think that, that the point was made earlier, that clarity and understanding of where the lanes are and where, where cars should be is, is always more beneficial than, than letting it go wild on its own. But what the point that I was going to address was that this will be, this will be monitored by crossing guards. We will have people there who will monitor the, the flow of children and parents crossing the road. So I'm not concerned about that safety issue. And in terms of the occasional truck that's going to go up Webster Street to, to deliver goods, you know, part of, part of having to do deliveries is knowing when not to be someplace. And frankly, if, if they want to try to get their, their truck up during the middle of the release or the, the dropping off of kids, I think that they're going to adjust their schedules accordingly, because nobody wants that. And, and at the end of the day, that's, that's really their issue to deal with, not ours.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, is there anyone else that hasn't spoken on this matter or wishes to speak a second time? And by the way, Councillor Majota is, is on the call. Councillor Worthley?
Thank you. This school is going to open in 40 days. And so if we were to wait till the school opens and make changes, it would take a little while for us and our process to work. The way I see this working, it will be congested. There's no question. It's going to be more congested in September than it is today, right? But if we don't do this, and don't create an extra lane, cars will stack and back up. And naturally, people will say, well, I'm going to go up Mount Vernon. I'm going to go up Fair Street. I'm going to go down Friends Street. And then that's going to be people frustrated, trying to get to work, going fast to the neighborhoods. I'm not saying that's not going to happen, but this allows more cars to go out to the major thoroughfare and avoid them going through the neighborhoods. So I would think that creating more space for them to stack, which is the official word, stacking lanes, I think that makes it easier on the downtown neighborhoods. And people drive fast in their narrow streets. So I, I think this makes sense. And like Councillor Grow said, if it doesn't, we, we just power wash it. Lines are gone.
Thank you, Councillor. Anyone else like to speak in favor or in opposition in the discussion? Councillor O'Neill, I think you've already spoken twice. So let's, let's see. Has anyone not spoken twice? Councillor O'Hara?
Thank you. I'd just like to add that I am concerned. Our traffic commissioner chair, Chairman Robert Ryan, has voiced his opinion and concerns. We, we, I certainly have utmost respect for Mr. Ryan. I think we all do. And we've reached, I reach out to him on a regular basis over my eight years over traffic issues. But this one hasn't, hasn't come before the traffic commission, and that is concerning. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor. Councillor Majota, would you like to say anything? I, I, I'm counsellors without objection. I think Councillor Majota, unless you object, because he did listen to the full public hearing, I'd like to suggest that he be part of the vote unless anyone has an objection. Okay, say none. So, Councillor Majota, did you have anything to add? Because we haven't heard from you. Councillor Gross, either one of you?
Okay, yes. I, I've, I've seen these three-way intersections before in other, in other schools. And I'm, and last meeting, Tracy O'Neill was mentioning, if someone's in the second lane trying to go left, if someone's trying to go right, how would it be able to see? I think that comes even if a single lane. I think that people with a single lane would, would have a tendency to sort of split the lane itself to go either left or to go right, to have a line and to have more structure with the, the road, I believe. And I've seen it in other schools where they do right-hand only lanes, straight lanes, and then have upcoming traffic going in the opposite direction. And I have, you know, and these particular schools, I don't want to mention them, but I haven't seen any issues with that. So I only see this helping the situation and being safer for those who are driving and those who are walking in the area. And I'm not sure, I might have, I got the tail end because sorry, I had a prior meeting to this. Councillor Grow had mentioned something about deliveries and going up to that particular route. And I, and I sort of, I got the tail end again. I sort of agree where, you know, if, if it's busy, certain companies would either go there way before school opens to drop off certain items, or go during the afternoon. So I think it's to the company's benefit to sort of, you know, adjust their schedules to, to deliver food or items that need to get through there. And we're talking about a small window of just the beginning of school and the end of school, where I just see this being a lot safer for those who are in that area. And I do have, and I will have family members that go to that school. So, you know, safety is the utmost, most important thing for me as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion, counsellors? Councillor O'Neill?
Thank you. I just have a question. Will.
Councillor, this isn't, this isn't for questions right now. We're, this is our discussion. Is it a question that one of us can answer? Because we don't have.
Never mind. Don't worry about it.
Okay. So my final, my final comment is that this is a work in progress. And I think as things come up, they should be addressed. And I think we'll, we'll work closely to make sure that the schools and administration are overseeing that. Even matters like the trailer truck issues, that could be a separate issue that could be dealt with, that is independent of this. And whatever the ward councillors and at-large councillors feel are important can certainly be brought forward as a separate issue. So I'm going to be supporting this. Councillor Memmard, your hands up. And you're, go ahead. You have the floor, and then we're ready for the vote.
Thank you. I just, I just wanted to follow up on Councillor Majota and his comment about safety and his personal investment. I also will have family members attending this school, either by bus or by drop-off or by, by, by foot with family members. And so I, you know, I'm greatly concerned about the safety of the, of the children going into the school. And I'm comfortable with what I think the school committee.
going into the school, and I'm, I'm comfortable with what I think the school committee and the city are working towards, and I think this is a good proposal under the circumstances. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I think we all know what the, the vote is right now, what, what the vote is on the floor, what the standing committee has presented. Are we ready to unvote, counselors? Does anyone wanna hear it repeated again from Counsel Nolan, or are we comfortable? Okay, let's, um, let's, let's take a vote. Counsel Majota.
Yes.
Counsel Memard.
Yes.
Counsel Nolan.
Yes.
Counsel O'Hara.
No.
Counsel O'Neill.
No.
Counsel Worthley.
Yes.
Counsel Gilman. Yes. Counsel Groves.
Yes.
Counsel Gro.
Yes.
The yeses have it. Nine in favor, two opposed.
Seven.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, thank you. Seven, seven in favor, two opposed. Thank you. So that concludes our special meeting. Our next meeting is next Tuesday, the twenty-fifth.
Madam President.
Yes.
There was an accusation about open meeting law violation earlier, and being someone of the open meeting law lunatic here, I didn't, I didn't notice any, so I would really think that, I would hope that Counsel O'Hara would be able to articulate what that particular was to us as a counsel, also as, as he explores it with the Attorney General's Office. Because I know I've asked many open meeting law questions to the point where the Attorney General's Office is saying, please, will you ask your own counsel? So I, I, I didn't notice any open meeting law violations, so I was just, was very curious about why that was, like, would just ask that that, we could be included in any information.
I'm sure.
Go ahead, Counsel Gro.
I'd like to make a motion to reconsider on the vote.
Second.
Second.
Counsel Gro made a motion to reconsider, and it was seconded by, I believe, Counselor Memard. So on the reconsideration, Counsel Majota.
No.
Counsel Memard.
No.
Counsel Nolan.
No.
Counsel O'Hara.
No.
Counsel O'Neill.
No.
Counsel Worthley.
No.
Counsel Gilman, no. Counsel Groves.
No.
Counsel Gro.
No.
The motion fails. Zero in favor, nine opposed. So this concludes our meeting. Thank you, Madam Clerk, for being here once again, and for everybody for making this a priority. We appreciate it. Is there a motion to adjourn?
No.
Second.
Second.
Rule call vote, Counsel Majota.
Yes.
Counsel Memard.
Yes.
Counsel Nolan.
Yes, and good night.
Counsel O'Hara.
Yes.
Counsel O'Neill.
Yes.
Counsel Worthley.
Yes, good night.
Counsel Gilman. Yes. Counsel Groves.
Yes.
Counsel Gro.
Yes, thank you.
The yeses have it. Zero opposed. Good night, everybody.
I apologize for my lack of video.